The time is now six o'clock and the Tuesday, November fourteenth, 2023, Kingsport City Schools Board of Education Business Meeting is now called to order. We will start things off with Dr. Andy Tru and some special guests.
I have two very, I have two very special guests with us this evening. I have Hudson and Bentley. They're going to come up. Bentley's ready to roll. So Hudson and Bentley, you guys are, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. Also.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. And who's your teacher?
Ms. Roberts.
Ms. Roberts.
Ms. Roberts, who is here with us tonight. Thank you for coming. We're excited you guys are here. So when you're not at school, what is it you like to do? Do you have hobbies or do you like to, or you play sports or play outside? What do you like to do?
Go to the park.
Go to the park. What about, what do you like to do?
Play inside.
Play inside. Very good. Well, we are really excited you guys are here. I know we've been talking for the last few minutes. They are ready to go. So we're going to ask everybody if you would please rise and we're going to turn around and face the flag right there and whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, never ending, just as small.
Excellent job, guys. I like the enthusiasm with which you led that pledge. Great job. What else are we, what else do you want to do? Yeah, there's cookies in the back. Mama's gonna not be happy with us. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the agenda, which includes the consent agenda. Once the agenda is accepted, the board mutually agrees not to discuss any item of business or take any action that has not been accepted for the agenda. I would like to strike one of the consent policy numbers, 6.303, so we can have a board discussion. 6.303. Okay, so that will be moved to the end of the agenda noted. Are there any other items to be pulled? Okay, so is there a motion for acceptance with that item being pulled?
So, so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and tonight, unfortunately, Mr. Dean is not able to be with us here live. He has the COVID. So he is joining us remotely and so we'll be doing a roll call vote tonight. So Ms. Altizer. Aye, but Mr. Dean is very much live. He's just not in person.
Mr. Dean?
Aye, and alive.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Witt?
Aye. Okay, with that, we will move on to our recognitions. Oh, excuse me. My, excuse me. I was, I'm so excited about recognizing these state champions that I skipped over a very important part. This is the time when members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda items. It is not the time to speak about personnel issues as there are more appropriate ways in which these can be addressed. If you are not sure how to do this, please ask one of us after the meeting. In your remarks, you may not refer to students by name without permission from the parent or guardian. If you would like to speak on a topic not included on the agenda, you are asked to submit your request in writing to the superintendent of schools at least three business days prior to the scheduled date of the meeting. Now, if you would like to speak about an item included on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. I request that you state your name and limit your remarks to a maximum of three minutes. And I have a list here of people who have signed in. So if that's okay, we'll just go in this order and you can just make your way to the podium. We will begin with Stacy Andis. And my apologies if I butcher these names, but if you can just make your way to the microphone, that would be great. And Ms. Altizer, if you would assist with this, that'd be great. Thank you for being here. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Hi. My name is Stacy Andis. I'm 1112 Fay Street, Kingsport, Tennessee. I'm here to address the interrogation of the students. And I feel as though it would be a breach of the constitutional rights of our students in order to have, sorry, nervous.
Who's hiding?
To have them questioned without the presence of their guardians and to hold them accountable for remaining silent and have suspension for the consequences of remaining silent. Us as adults, we have that constitutional right and our constitutional rights do trickle down to our children. They are human beings. They fall under the constitutional right. They fall under the first of freedom of speech within the school system. They fall underneath the fourth with privacy within reason within the school system. Discrimination, which I feel questioning them without a per, without a parent present or the ability to contact a parent or to hold them accountable in order to speak with suspension, I feel that is discrimination under the Fourth Amendment right as, as an age. The Fifth Amendment right to avoid self-accommodation, to be able to remain silent. These are all factors that need to be taken in place when you're thinking about this. This doesn't only affect our children in short term. These can have long-term consequences of our children and the things that, that may or may not be said in there. It is not the school's place. It is an overreach to try to parent our children and to take away their constitutional rights. It is, it's an intimidation factor in order to have a person of power over the children to question them without a parent present. That's taking away a safety net. It is not their place as an educator. And quite honestly, it's a liability for the school system, the board, and the education as, as a whole, the teachers. We just sat up here and we said the pledges, Pledge of Allegiance, which stands on the Constitution of the United States. It represents everything that we have fought for. But yet I'm sitting up here as a parent fighting for my child's right and I find that absurd. I can't believe that this is something that has even reached your table and I can't believe it's something that's under consideration. It will not have a positive impact on the children, the staff, the city of Kingsport. It's, you're setting your students and your children, your staff, and your city up for failure. And I strongly disagree with this.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And next we'll have Lori Daniel. Mr. Dean? Oh, okay. All right. Mr. Dean, one moment. I don't want to be disrepro, are you able to hear the comments?
I am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure he, he was able to hear. Okay, well, so well noted then, Lori. We will move on to Joe Brock.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so. Does anybody know exactly where these policies were wrote?
Actually, we, we're just going to listen to you at this, this time we just, we just.
That's, that's one of my points. Did it come from here? Did the policies come from here?
We, we will address that when we talk about it. But at this point, for public, we don't want to waste your time.
The only reason I was asking that is because I know it didn't. It came from the Board of Education of Tennessee that is not anything except for a collection of Board of Educations, right? So that's what I'm trying to get at. The rules that are being implemented here in Kingsport, Tennessee are being wrote elsewhere and that's wrong, first of all. Second of all, there happens to be a bill that should become law as soon as possible that would outlaw parts of your, parts of your policies that you're trying to put forth at this time. I'm sorry, I'm almost flabbergasted that we have to have this discussion just because the law actually states that the child deserves it to be recorded and/or a lawyer present and none of that is in your policy, zero. So when it becomes law, you're going to have to change your policies anyway. I believe it to be totally against our laws right now in the first place, but I'm getting no corroboration from lawyers and/or our Kingsport lawyer or anyone else in the community. Chris McCart wouldn't even talk to me about it. That's weird because he used to call me on stuff. So what I'm going to say is. Shouldn't have even been considered, not even a little bit. Y'all should have threw it away when it came across your desk.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. And now we'll have Sylvester Jenkins, Jr.
Thank you all for having me and thank you all for allowing me to speak and allowing me this time. The last time I was up here, I spoke in regards to the bullying, best practices, things of that nature. And I wanted to try to connect this to that in the fact that I understand the need to get information and get the word out and figure out what's going on in the situation. But when you're questioning people without the presence of a lawyer or without the presence of a parent or guardian, that's fascism. That's textbook fascism. That's what we're teaching our kids. We're teaching our kids that we live in a police state, not in a land of a free society. And my problem with this is, is as an African American, I look at the history of things like this. This is how fascism starts. It starts with the questioning and it starts with the targeting of our weakest members. It starts, starts target, it targets the weakest members of our society, which in this case is our children. And I, as a parent, will not stand for that. I will speak out for that every chance I get, every opportunity that I get. Because, you know, we did, and when I'm looking at this policy, it gives terrorists more rights than our children. Literally, a terrorist has the right to, to representation. A terrorist has the right to a lawyer. A terrorist has the right to some sort of legal presence to help them when they're being interrogated. They have the right to refuse to be interrogated. Our children do not? Where's the, what are, what are we teaching our kids? What are, what are we showing that? We're standing up here talking about, you know, pledging allegiance to the land of the free and the home of the brave. And what I'm seeing here, this is a mockery of that. This is a direct mockery of that. And I, as a parent, and I do, I truly believe that other parents here will not stand for that. And again, and it goes back to what the man said earlier. Who's writing these rules? Who's putting these policies out there? Because at the end of the day, it's not about protecting our children. It seems more about, you know, protecting your pos, protecting your posterior, protecting your rear ends and liability. Because at the end of the day, we're teaching our kids that it's not okay to speak up. It's not okay to protect ourselves, you know, so what's the point of this? That's what I want to know. At the end of the day, what's the point of all this? But again, what it all boils down to is this is how fascism starts votes. It starts with people targeting the weakest among us. And as it were to us, as parents, the strong ones, we're supposed to be the ones standing up. And if I have to stand alone, so be it. Thank you for your time.
And now Victoria. Excuse me, Victoria?
Good evening. My name is Victoria Boitas. I'm at 210 Sassenau Court in Kingsport, Tennessee. And I'm also here to express my vehement opposition to the interrogation and search portion of the, the LEA compliance report. In reading through this, one of my biggest concerns, in addition to the fact that it is allowing, you know, or seeks to allow the schools and SR officers to interrogate or to question kids without the consent or their, the presence of their parents, but it's also seeking to punish them if they refuse to answer a question. And that is one of the biggest things I have an issue with. If a child does not feel comfortable answering questions without their parent being around them, they should have the ability to be silent and to wait for their parent to be with them, to offer them the safety to be able to answer those questions in an environment where they feel safe. And I have major problems with this. As other people have mentioned, there are multiple, there are at least two different bills that are in the Tennessee General Assembly right now that are seeking to prevent these types of things, to prevent children from being questioned without their parents or having an attorney present. And additionally, it goes a step further to require that those types of interrogations, when a child is considered to be in custody, to be videotaped so that there is proof of everything that has happened. And those videotapes have to be provided to their attorneys and to their parents. And according to the state of Tennessee, a child is considered to be in custody if they're confined to a principal's office or any other room in the school property for questioning because the child would not feel free to leave without consequence. And I think in this case, this is clear that the child would be considered in custody and would fall under that. In Rutherford County, Tennessee, there was recently a multimillion dollar lawsuit against the county as a result of students being detained and questioned, interrogated by police officers at school and then having their comments used against them and being charged with crimes. And a lawsuit was brought against that county. I would hate to see the lawsuit similar to that brought against the city of Kingsport as a result of passing this and actually moving forward with interrogating our, our children in that way. I stand in vehement opposition to this and I hope that the Board of Education will not accept this, but will reject this as it stands.
Thank, thank you very much. And next we have Ashley Minnick.
Hello, Ashley Minnick from Kingsport, Tennessee, born and raised.
And could you state your address?
1609 Hunter Lane, Kingsport, Tennessee.
Thank you.
I was going to mirror everybody else's statements, but this was handed out. It's actually a House bill, Tennessee code. And it says that it has to be recorded by video or audio if a child is taken into custody due to suspicion. So why is that not included? If at all, if this can't be waived, it should at least be amended. And I want to go on record saying that I oppose this. And it should not be enacted at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and now we have Katasha.
I'm Katasha Martinez, 301 Blue Haven Drive. I moved from Big Stone Gap and I've lived here several years and my kids have attended Kingsport City Schools. That being said, I feel like, for one, I'm opposed to this mainly because it's breaking trust between the parents, the educators, and the people we trust to send our kids to the school with. Now, that being said, educators are exactly that and they should be trusted. We should be able to feel trust when we send our kids to school every day and not have to worry, well, what if something happened that didn't directly involve my child, but this came up? And I see that a lot of times where something happened, but then my child, you know, was there or witnessed it or something happened and they bring them in on it. And so then it kind of creates all of these things and no boundaries between the educators and the parents and what we stand for and our rights, you know, as people. That's kind of like if we said, well, let's take your rights away and see how you feel. Nobody's going to like that, you know, because we're all like, oh, I have my right to speak or I have my right to, you know, our own constitutional rights that we were born with. So when it says, you know, I've had to teach my kids their rights because it's being quieted in the school system and through the curriculum over the years. I grew up and I'm 38 years old knowing my rights. And I asked my kids, do you know your rights? I think I do. Okay, well, what are those? And they couldn't name one. So starting at a small age, I've taught them their rights. And as they get older, they know when something breaches that. But I've also taught them to be respectful, respectful at school, you know, respect the people who are educating you and things like that. But in the same way, if their rights aren't being respected, they're going to be less likely to want to respect the educators or the people around them who we're supposed to trust to send them to. So I've shown, well, I've been, I've seen over the years because I've, you know, I've watched the news, I've watched other, you know, people. And somehow I see like this is coming from other places and it's ending up in Kingsport, Tennessee. And here I feel like, you know, we're all kind of home-like, you know, we all really know each other. We get to know each other around, you know, this place. But when I seen it in other places being done this way, where the parents had no rights to, you know, their children at all once they step foot into the school system, I feel like that's going to be a huge drawback in this area because the more parents that come out and realize what's going on or say they're being told, there's going to be an uprising on things that parents are just not comfortable with because that's reaching our rights. So I oppose that. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you. We appreciate you being here and being engaged and, and interested in your child or your student or just in general in education here in, in Kingsport City Schools. We really do appreciate you being here. We're going to move on now to the recognition portion of our meeting. I have the pleasure of doing that tonight. I have the pleasure of recognizing the Lady Indians Golf State Championship team. Yay. So I'd like for them to come right on up here. I've already told them I'm going to embarrass them. And their coach, yes, coaches. There's no way I could remember. It's a good thing I have my notes because I could not remember all the accolades that these young ladies and their coaches have garnered over the past two years. The Dobbins Bennett Lady Indians Golf Team coached by Bill Darnell and Patty Iselstein capped off the 2023 golf season with the TSSAA State Championship on October 10th at the Sevierville Golf Club, giving Dobbins Bennett its first Ladies Golf State title since 1989. The Lady Indians competed in the two-day tournament and finished with a score of 297. Senior Mackenzie Hawke led the team shooting a score of 72 each day for a total of 144. And sophomore Eliza Robinson followed by shooting a 79 and 74 for a total of 153. Junior Lauren Maynard and sophomore McKenna DeBoer both played one day each. Prior to this year's state championship, the girls worked extremely hard all summer long on their game to give themselves a better opportunity to improve their 2022 fourth place finish. This group of young women completed back-to-back undefeated regular seasons in 2022 and 23, qualifying them for the TSSAA State Championships two consecutive years. They earned top honors at the 2023, the 1913 Invitational. And other accomplishments include tournament championships for '22 and '23 in the following areas: Jamboree, Mike Mills Invitational, Big Nine Conference, the district, the regional, and then finally the state. Yay. In addition to the team championships, Mackenzie Hawke and Eliza Robinson won Big Nine Conference Co-Players of the Year. Coach Bill Darnell was voted Big Nine Conference Coach of the Year. And we've got two seniors on the team, Mackenzie and Salma. And, but the others are going to be back and we expect great things in the future. So please help me with a round of applause congratulating our Lady Indians Golf State Champions. And I know this is not the only thing they do. I know they're involved in other things like student council and band and all kinds of activities. So these are leaders on the court and off the court. So we're very proud of them. Okay, so at this time, we're going to allow for a quick recess. If you would like to be dismissed, please feel free. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's fantastic too. But just wanted to give, give everyone that option. And with that, we will continue on now with Dr. Andy Tru. If we'll begin with item 4.1. Business, yeah, the end of business. Is that okay?
However, you all would like to do it, absolutely. So we come to you with the policies that were listed on first reading, 4.204, 4.700, and 6.202. So starting with 4.204, this was, just as a reminder, a policy, a new policy regarding summer instructional programs that the policy from the State Board of Ed requires LEAs to have additional information about makeup days in their policy. So this policy itself, being a new policy, would outline that as far as who would be involved in summer bridge camps as well as the attendance requirements and how we would need to make things up if students are not able to attend. So that was 4.202. You'll know that after conversations last, at the last work session regarding 4.403, that was on library material, materials and the ability to alter the process for boards and for school districts to handle the appeal process. Based on your feedback at the, at the work session, we have pulled 4.403 from the stack for consideration. We would leave that the way it is and the appeal process would stay as it's currently written in policy. So that was again, based on your, on your feedback at the work session last time. 4.700, assessment programs. That was in relation to Public Chapter 269, allowing students to test out of courses if the districts elects to offer that. You'll note that in the proposed policy on page three, lines 25 through 27, the statement that at this time, we are not electing to pursue that option. And so that is the, the revision of policy 4.700. 6.202, homeschools. That was in relation to a change in state law regarding the requirement, the previous requirement that when homeschool students register with the district, that they, they submit vaccination records. We did, based on your feedback, consult with legal at TSBA as well as a city attorney regarding could we, the question that was asked was, could we require that above the, the law? And so the response from TSB, I'm sorry, yes, from TSBA is they were, their response is that they were hesitant to, to, as a district, that we should continue that, that the legislative intent for removing the requirement from law was to provide more flexibility for homeschool students. Also in consultation with the city attorney, he concurred with that opinion that we would not, he would not recommend we add a requirement beyond the state law that says that you would not have, not require that type of information to be submitted by a homeschool student. So those are the three policies we're bringing to you here on first reading. Again, 4.204 is a new policy, would require a second reading, but 4.700 and 6.202 being revised policies. But the budget amendment, which is 4.2, on the agenda this evening?
Yes, that is correct.
Would appropriate funding for HVAC projects at Lincoln and Johnson. We are reaching end-of-life on both of those HVAC systems just due to age. And so we have been, you'll remember, a while ago, we approved a professional services agreement for architecture on those two projects. Those two projects have gone out to bid and we have those bids back. And so in order to have funding in place for those projects, they did come in at an amount above what we had initially anticipated they would, they would come back at. So that, that is the reason for needing a budget amendment. The combined cost of those two projects, those two HVAC projects, you'll note in the amendment, $6,777,317. And that is a combination of the two bids. We had appropriated originally $5,047,422 for those projects. There is a significant amount of that coming from ESER funds, which should come pretty close, I think, to, from, from the capital side, to spending out the rest of those ESER funds. Now, there are some instructional side where that's still happening, but the amount that we would set aside for these projects, just over $1.3 million. That is, the intent of that, those funds are that we would use those for the mechanical units themselves, not the labor to install. So that will not pay for all of the mechanical unit, but that would, we're going to use that money for equipment. That allows us to get it spent within the deadline to spend ESER funds. Also, because it is just for the equipment, that then does not bring in Bacon Davis wage calculations into this as well. And so we're, we're able to, we're spending local funds on those. Currently, our unreserved fund balance sits just under $12 million, $11,923,829. So the budget amendment proposal this evening is that we would pull the amount to get us to that $6,777,000 needed for the project, and that would be to add an additional $1,729,895 from the general purpose school unreserved fund balance into this project for these two, these two HVAC projects. That would leave us with right about $8 million in the fund balance. You'll note there's a little bit of a difference there, and if you're, if you're quickly doing that math, because we're anticipating the roofing project that we're looking at for the TAC would run somewhere approximately, we would need about $800,000 of fund reserve for that. So if approved, this, this budget amendment would take the, take the general purpose school fund, unreserved fund balance down to just over $8 million, so about 8%. So that is the, that is the purpose of the budget amendment. Be happy to answer questions about that, or if there's other associated questions about the HVAC projects, we could do that now or on the individual items. I'm happy to, to answer questions at the board's pleasure.
And, and just as a note, the 8 million is still well above the required amount. I think 3% is the legal amount, 5% is the David Frye amount, and this is 8%.
Exactly. This would leave us somewhere in the ballpark of eight.
Great. Okay. I hope my air conditioning doesn't go out anytime soon in my house, although it would be nothing like this, but not a cheap, inexpensive venture for sure.
We are currently in process at Robinson to do a similar project, replacement. We're in really the second round of classrooms right now. And so it would be similar to that and what we have done at, also at Jefferson, what we did last year, just end-of-life on units and it's time to go in and do these replacements.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Dr. Tru regarding this budget amendment? Okay. Then the recommended action is to approve budget amendment number five as presented. Is there a motion for approval?
Summate.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Altiser?
Mrs. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Woods?
Aye.
Dr. Tru, keep rolling.
Okay. Now that the money is, is in place, we'll go through these one by one, starting with Lincoln. So the Lincoln project, we opened bids on October 18th. We received four different bids on this project, so we were excited and glad to see several bidders at the table for this project. The lowest base bid was from HVAC Incorporated, which came in, the base bid at $2,925,950. Again, this is going in and at Lincoln, replacing the existing mechanical units, putting barred units in the classrooms like we did at Jefferson and like we're doing right now at Robinson. There are some rooftop units in some locations, some hallway units. There is a little bit of associated work when it comes to the demolition and reinstall of flooring and painting and those sorts of things to kind of dress the room back up after we go in and do that work. We would anticipate this work to take place over the spring and summer of this year. And both of these projects, the anticipated completion date is prior to the '24-'25 school year, typically taking two classrooms at a time and then really hitting it in the summer where we have the opportunity to go in and do larger volume of work. We would also anticipate these schools would possibly not be used for summer school this year. We would have other locations so that way we could really go in and go after these projects during that timeframe. So the first project, again, approving the bid for Lincoln Elementary, base bid of $2,925,950 from HVAC Inc. You can see in the packet there are architect fees as well as contingency for a total project cost of $3,277,457.
Are there questions for Dr. Tru?
One other note, I forgot about Lincoln. Involved in this project as well is the replacement of the main electrical switchgear that was, had been on our five-year plan and now our one-year plan. I apologize for not pointing that out. We went ahead and put that in this project so that way it could be done at the same time. And we could go ahead and, again, end-of-life with that unit to be able to get that done before we might have potential issues.
So that's the $38,160.
Now, $38,000 is for diffusers that go up, but that, the base bid included the, included the electrical.
Okay. All right. So the recommended action then is to enter into an agreement with HVAC Incorporated for the Lincoln Elementary HVAC replacement in the amount of $2,964,110 and authorize a 6% contingency of $177,847. Is there a motion for approval?
Summate.
Second.
Ms. Altiser?
Mrs. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Woods?
Aye.
Dr. Tru?
Johnson Elementary, same, same basic construct here in going in and replacing a set of units, a system that is reaching its end of life. Three bids received for this project, which we opened on November 7th. Low bid of $3,181,000 from SB White Company. We would then also, you would need to add in your architect fees, your construction, your contingency for a total project cost of $3,499,860.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Tru? Okay. Then the recommended action is to enter into an agreement with SB White Company Incorporated for the Johnson Elementary HVAC replacement in the amount of $3,181,000 and authorize a 6% contingency of $190,860. Is there a motion for approval?
Summate.
Second.
Ms. Altiser?
Mrs. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Woods?
Aye.
Dr. Tru?
Johnson Elementary, same, same basic construct here in going in and replacing a set of units, a system that is reaching its end of life. Three bids received for this project, which we opened on November 7th. Low bid of $3,181,000 from SB White Company. We would then also, you would need to add in your architect fees, your construction, your contingency for a total project cost of $3,499,860.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Tru? Okay. Then the recommended action is to enter into an agreement with SB White Company Incorporated for the Johnson Elementary HVAC replacement in the amount of $3,181,000 and authorize a 6% contingency of $190,860. Is there a motion for approval?
Summate.
Second.
Ms. Altiser?
Mrs. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Woods?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, so we will go on to 4.5.
Thank you very much. We're excited to get those projects rolling along. The last one we have for you from a capital standpoint is a revision of a prior, an agreement you all approved previously on October 10th. And just to go back and rehash that discussion a little bit, we know with the Tribe Athletic Complex out at Soul of the North, we have been chasing roof leaks for quite some time. We continue to do so and will continue to do so certainly, but in order to protect the investment that we made in that property, we are recommending that we go ahead and pursue re-roofing of that project. We've been working with Kane Rash West Architects in order to look at the design of that. And what we are presenting to you tonight is a revised Architectural Services Agreement. On the 10th of October, we approved, you approved, an agreement at $29,232. The agreement we're bringing, the revision we're bringing you tonight is a little bit higher. It's $48,632,000, I'm sorry, $48,632.57. The reason for that is because as we've continued to look at that project, there is an alternate that you can see on the fourth slide, the fourth page of your packet there, considering the orange alternate, the, the blue section, which is generally over the gymnasium and the concourse area, there's a couple of other small areas near it, but that is generally the, going to be the base bid. The alternate, which you had on there, was the pink. In continuing conversations that we need to consider, again, as an alternate, the orange area because of the way the roof structure lays and the area that TCAT is in, we're at this point pursuing to get an idea on what it would cost to do that work, adding that it is an alternate, as well as you can kind of see an area with alternate three, there's some guttering that run alongside the blue area that really needs to be looked at from a, from a improvement standpoint. That's an area that we're continually getting leaks on, as well as the fact that as, as we've looked at this project, the estimation of the square footage and the cost, given what we're needing to do and where we're doing it, the more they look into it, CRW is thinking our cost may be more along the lines of $18 a square foot. The original number was based on a $16 square foot number. So as this has continued to evolve, we've added, again, alternate two, that orange area, guttering, a few additional spaces in that blue space to cover all the base bid. And so thus the need for a revised Architectural Services Agreement not to exceed $48,632.
Now, is this, this obviously has not been put out to bid yet.
Correct.
That would be something in the January timeframe?
We would anticipate that we would come back to you with bids in Jan. for consideration.
This is just for the, the professional services?
Correct.
Surrounded?
Yes. We're altering, we're recommending an alteration in amendment, not amendment two, we're recommending an alteration to the original Architectural Services Agreement to include these other areas because now there's no more square footage and the guttering that we, as we've looked at it, really needs to be, really needs to be addressed.
Dr. Tru, would you mind to just quickly repeat what you said? What are the color designations?
Sure.
The blue is, is, is the gymnasium and the concourse area?
That's correct.
Concession area?
In generally, that is the blue area.
Okay.
The pink area is the CTE bays in general where TCAT currently exists, that, that back area. And the way that the roof line lays and where, where TCAT, again, is taking some of the orange area, we've added the orange area in as an alternate, and so there would need to be Architectural Services to, to design that out, as well as, like I say, that guttering area that runs there along in between.
We currently have students there. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Tru? Okay. With that, then the recommended action is to amend the Professional Services Agreement with Kane Rash West Architects Incorporated for Architectural Services for the re-roofed project of gym and lobby areas of the Tribe Athletic Complex and the Tennessee Center for Applied Technology Area. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Ms. Altiser?
Mrs. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Woods?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, so we will go on to 4.5.
Thank you very much. We're excited to get those projects rolling along. The last one we have for you from a capital standpoint is a revision of a prior, an agreement you all approved previously on October 10th. And just to go back and rehash that discussion a little bit, we know with the Tribe Athletic Complex out at Soul of the North, we have been chasing roof leaks for quite some time. We continue to do so and will continue to do so certainly, but in order to protect the investment that we made in that property, we are recommending that we go ahead and pursue re-roofing of that project. We've been working with Kane Rash West Architects in order to look at the design of that. And what we are presenting to you tonight is a revised Architectural Services Agreement. On the 10th of October, we approved, you approved, an agreement at $29,232. The agreement we're bringing, the revision we're bringing you tonight is a little bit higher. It's $48,632,000, I'm sorry, $48,632.57. The reason for that is because as we've continued to look at that project, there is an alternate that you can see on the fourth slide, the fourth page of your packet there, considering the orange alternate, the, the blue section, which is generally over the gymnasium and the concourse area, there's a couple of other small areas near it, but that is generally the, going to be the base bid. The alternate, which you had on there, was the pink. In continuing conversations that we need to consider, again, as an alternate, the orange area because of the way the roof structure lays and the area that TCAT is in, we're at this point pursuing to get an idea on what it would cost to do that work, adding that it is an alternate, as well as you can kind of see an area with alternate three, there's some guttering that run alongside the blue area that really needs to be looked at from a, from a improvement standpoint. That's an area that we're continually getting leaks on, as well as the fact that as, as we've looked at this project, the estimation of the square footage and the, the cost, given what we're needing to do and where we're doing it, the more they look into it, CRW is thinking our cost may be more along the lines of $18 a square foot. The original number was based on a $16 square foot number. So as this has continued to evolve, we've added, again, alternate two, that orange area, guttering, a few additional spaces in that blue space to cover all the base bid. And so thus the need for a revised Architectural Services Agreement not to exceed $48,632.
Now, is this, this obviously has not been put out to bid yet?
Correct.
That would be something in the January timeframe?
We would anticipate that we would come back to you with bids in Jan. for consideration.
This is just for the, the professional services?
Correct.
Surrounded?
Yes. We're altering, we're recommending an alteration in amendment, not amendment two, we're recommending an alteration to the original Architectural Services Agreement to include these other areas because now there's no more square footage and the guttering that we, as we've looked at it, really needs to be, really needs to be addressed.
Dr. Tru, would you mind to just quickly repeat what you said? What are the color designations?
Sure.
The blue is, is, is the gymnasium and the concourse area?
That's correct.
Concession area?
In generally, that is the blue area.
Okay.
The pink area is the CTE bays in general where TCAT currently exists, that, that back area. And the way that the roof line lays and where, where TCAT, again, is taking some of the orange area, we've added the orange area in as an alternate, and so there would need to be Architectural Services to, to design that out, as well as, like I say, that guttering area that runs there along in between.
We currently have students there. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Tru? Okay. With that, then the recommended action is to amend the Professional Services Agreement with Kane Rash West Architects Incorporated for Architectural Services for the re-roofed project of gym and lobby areas of the Tribe Athletic Complex and the Tennessee Center for Applied Technology Area. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Ms. Altiser?
Mrs. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Woods?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, so we will go on to 4.5.
Thank you very much. We're excited to get those projects rolling along. The last one we have for you from a capital standpoint is a revision of a prior, an agreement you all approved previously on October 10th. And just to go back and rehash that discussion a little bit, we know with the Tribe Athletic
Right, yes. If a law enforcement officer is acting in the exercise of their official duties, then no one can interfere with that, correct?
Thanks.
And as it would pertain to questioning by school officials, if the school official is questioning regarding code of conduct issues that wouldn't otherwise have a criminal counterpoint, a counterpart, such as, I don't know, when I was a DB, they had just renovated parts of the building, so we weren't allowed to chew gum, is how far back I go. So if, there's no criminal jeopardy at play there with whether or not I'm chewing gum, a school official would be able to ask me, "Mr. Rowlett, were you chewing gum?" And if I lied to the school official about that, yes, I could be in trouble twice, once for being in violation of the school rules because I was chewing gum when I shouldn't have, and the other for lying to the school official that was asking me, had I engaged in a policy violation. So the provision with regards to falsely or evasively refusing to answer are focusing on those interrogations by school personnel, not the provisions regarding the involvement of law enforcement. I don't know if that helps to clarify things, or if you need more.
It's really important to clarify the difference between school policies, you know, when I was on the school board the first time, it was dress code. I mean, that was a big school policy issue, and how much time administrators spent on all that, you know. So it's anything from chewing gum and patches on your shirt to really serious stuff, but it's important to differentiate school policy discussion compared to legal stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
And this policy has a tendency to make you feel as you, at first reading, like maybe the two are blended together, when they're really not.
Would I be correct in these two bullet points, the second and third one, interrogations by police at principals' requests and police-initiated interrogations, those two things are matters of law enforcement?
Correct.
Correct. So, you know, if there's a suspected, or suspected crime at school, assault, felony vandalism, something like that, something that would be a breaking of law.
Correct.
We reach out to law enforcement. That's now a criminal, that would be a criminal investigation. At that point, it's what the police, the law enforcement would do.
Correct.
So these two items then are not really, I don't mean to say out of our hands, but that's not, that's not the school system.
And I don't know that every criminal violation even gets reported to law enforcement in the context of arguably any physical contact that I make on another person that you find offensive is a misdemeanor assault. I don't know that we'd note, and these gentlemen could correct me if I'm making a false or an incorrect statement, but I don't know that we report every fight even to law enforcement, although by its very nature, somebody engaging in a fight is engaging in an assault, if not both parties.
Right, so we, and just, I know it sounds a bit like a straw man argument, but if the due diligence was the fact that a parent had to be present in order for a child, so two children get into a fight and they say, "Hey, we want to ask you about the fight, but we can't until your parents get here, and we can't discuss any of this, we can't." Then we run into a bit of an issue of locking down the entire school system until somebody can get there in order to be able to ask the kids, "Hey, what happened here?"
Right.
Right. Are you familiar, because I actually believe the Attorney General spoke to many of these questions in an opinion from 2014. Are you familiar with that one?
14-22.
14-22 and 14-21, where they specifically call this out. And number seven and eight are particularly what I want to speak to and make this available to anybody who wants to read it. And this is from a Republican Attorney General. "If a principal agrees to allow a law enforcement officer to interrogate a student at school about an unrelated crime committed outside school hours, must the principal first notify the child's parents, guardians, or custodian, or may the principal defer to the officer's instructions not to make such a notification?" And the State Attorney General, Republican, again said, "No, a school principal has no legal duty to notify a child's parent, guardian, or custodian before a child is interrogated by a law enforcement officer." Again, number eight, "If a principal's request, requests law enforcement officers to come to the school to investigate and interrogate a student suspicion, or suspected of a crime involving the school, must the principal first notify the child's parent, guardian, or custodian?" Again, same answer, no.
I think it's important for you to reiterate where that came from.
This is the State Attorney General of Tennessee from February 24th, 2014, opinion number 1421, and then there's an update, 1422. Maybe it's the same one?
It's the same one.
Okay, 1421 is the one I have. Maybe it's, maybe he left one.
The citation that I'm giving may be different, yeah. The way these things are recorded, you can access them through private services or through the official report. The official report is 1422.
That's two more.
You're correct, yes. Good. And to be clear, Attorney General opinions are not binding precedent like a Supreme Court case. However, courts, especially because the Attorney General is the supreme legal counsel for the state, if there is some question as to the interpretation of state law or how it applies, courts will often defer to the opinion of the Attorney General. So while it is not binding precedent the same way that a decision from the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals or the US Supreme Court, even the Tennessee Supreme Court, courts do look at Attorney General's opinions for guidance.
This is the same Attorney General that sued the US Department of Education over a policy that was discriminatory within the state, running contrary to a state law that was passed. So in essence, the policy that we have before us is predicated upon not only federal law but state law backed up by, from what I can check, I'm just Dr. Google here, at least 60 different districts across the state that have this exact same policy enacted. Thank you.
Dr. Hampton, I want to pitch you on the spot, but could you speak to how you as a principal and now you as a superintendent, how things are handled? I mean, you as the superintendent now have the responsibility per this policy that you have procedures in place so that if there is a criminal investigation, that there is an attempt to notify parents, that you're not trying to suppress that at all, that it is part of the professional training that our administrators receive?
Right. Part of that basis is on what is the urgency or the exigency of the situation? If it's, if we're investigating something that could result in bodily harm to a student, then the parent contact might not happen immediately. It might be something that we process after we eliminate the threat to the school or to the student. But our code of conduct has procedures in place that administrators are trained on and familiar with so that they take our policies and the legal requirements of the state of Tennessee and the United States into account when applying these practices and policies. So very rare does the situation occur by which we have a detective or a police officer come onto our campuses to conduct an investigation. But in fact, if they do, there's usually a level of urgency to that and a police investigation which we don't interfere in.
Okay, so a couple of the things, the reason I wanted this pulled back, obviously there's a lot of emotion on it. Number one is, some of this first came about because of searches and the vaping, and we've discussed the vaping and how can we do things. And so that was like the main premise for getting this. And then you start reading a little bit deeper, and one of the things that kind of concerned me, and they jump out at me, and granted, it's the law enforcement part, but it's reasonable attempts or first attempt to contact parents. What is a reasonable attempt? Is it one phone call? Is it waiting an hour? Is it waiting three hours? What is a reasonable attempt? Go back to Mr. Golden's case. You've got two students who are in a fight. One parent's there immediately. The other, we don't know. They never called the school back. They don't acknowledge us, so it could be weeks before we hear from them. And I mean, I don't mean to make light, but we have students in the system whose parents don't care that much about their disciplinary issues. And so we could be, if we had to notify the parent, we could be waiting a really long time, and we could be sitting with two students, one with the parent and one with a missing inaction parent. So what is reasonable? What is, I mean, we make a first attempt? Do we make a second attempt? Do we just let the police, I mean, the police are there, but those are things. And I also, the refusing to answer a question, I think that's probably the one that gets me. I mean, I understand, we're at school, as a child, if I got called in the principal's office, you know, "Did you, you know, steal somebody's hat?" Well, yeah, I probably did. I throw it on the ground, you know, whatever it is. You know, there's different things. And so, you know, that type of interrogation, that interrogation word is a very strong, harsh word, but I could be questioned, and that's simple. It doesn't necessarily necessitate calling my parents, say, "Oh, Ms., you know, Brinker, you have to come in and listen to what your daughter did." That's a waste of a lot of people's time when it's a simple thing that's not causing bodily harm or a threat to another student. But if I was ready to take a knife to school or threaten to beat somebody up in the locker room or something, that's a different story. And if somebody accused me of that, then maybe a parent needs to come because that's a bigger discussion. You know, your child is threatening to hurt somebody. You need to be aware of that. So I think there's reasons when a principal, you know, as it comes down to the operation of the school and enforcement of its rules, there are certain things that I think can be handled without a parent. I mean, it's just a simple, here's a conversation, back to the respect, you know, you did this or you didn't do this. Were you chewing gum? I don't need to call my parent and go, "Guess what, Ms. Rowlett, your son was chewing gum." But if Bart was ready to pull my hair out and change my hairstyle, that's a different thing, you know. So I think there's different sides, but I think a child has the right to be quiet if they're just not comfortable because sometimes a kid gets really nervous, and they'll say things just so they can get out of that principal's office. They're nervous, they're intimidated. Or, you know, if an elementary kid got called into the principal's office, they might get scared and they might mix up the facts. You know, I was a witness to Ms. Altizer doing something, and I try to remember, but now I'm scared. Doc Hampton's looking at me and I'm nervous, and I can't remember exactly what happened, so I've got my facts all messed up. That's real life. I mean, people get nervous, especially with an authoritative figure standing nearby. So those are the things that kind of stick out, and I'm not saying we shouldn't ever question a student without a parent because I think, you know, several examples have been mentioned, but I think a child should be able to remain quiet if they just don't know or if they're not comfortable. And I think we need to define what is a reasonable attempt to contact a parent. I mean, is it, I don't know. I mean, is it one phone call? Is it five phone calls? Is it, I don't know, but I think that needs to be defined.
I think the word reasonable would be defined under the procedures, not the policy. I think the procedures would define, make the definition. So policy trumps, and then procedures are how it's done. I think that reasonable would be defined under procedures and not so much here. But to your point of the remain silent, yeah, I got no issue with, because I wish my kids would remain silent a lot.
I don't know if this helps, but also, based on the language of the policy, it does say "may," not "shall be subject." So the policy isn't requiring that in every instance where a student would not answer a question or gave an evasive answer, would be, discipline would be mandated. Obviously, it's going to be factually driven as to the circumstances regarding the non-answer.
And as to each individual circumstance, like what you're talking about, I mean, the next to the last article of that code, individual circumstances and local particularities require that individual principals must be relied on to exercise their professionally trained judgments in determining what action is appropriate within this part. I mean, I think every situation is going to lend itself to the interpretation of those that we trust our kids to. And so, I mean, I don't know if it's a fair question asked, but is there any language in this that is new than what you've been doing for the last 25 years? I mean, as far as questioning somebody that's, you know, maybe involved in breaking a school code of conduct?
No.
Nothing earth shattering?
These practices have been at play in schools for the entirety of my time in this school system.
Okay, then the question really, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut either one of y'all, because the question really stands in, do we need to pass this, or is it already something that we're doing?
That's why, that was, I'm sorry, I didn't make that point.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Passing the policy is irrelevant. The law remains the same.
The law is what the law is. And we, y'all have had to hear me say this so many times, I know you're tired of it, but I never understand why we have to have policies that say, "The law says, therefore we will follow the law." We don't have any option if it's a law. We can't decide, unless you're President of the United States and you tell your Attorney General that we're not going to pursue dope cases, we don't have that kind of authority as a school board to say we're not going to follow state or national governmental laws. We just don't have that authority.
Whether we have a policy or not, we have to follow the law.
That's right.
So the way I interpret it, the purpose of the policy is to bring awareness to us as well as our employees in our district to make sure that they know what the laws are. We're trying to give them the best strategies, and they love our kids.
Yes.
I mean, our educators, they are there, they're passionate about educating our students. They want to keep them safe. They want them to do their best. I believe that with all my heart. I cannot think of a single administrator across our entire district who would use their position in an inappropriate way. And in that code that you're talking about, the TCA code, another item says that the General Assembly further recognizes that a rising level of violent activity and use of drugs is occurring in some public schools, especially in urban areas, and that these activities threaten the well-being of all students in those schools. Our administrators and educators, they want our schools to be safe. Kids can't learn if it's not safe, and I think that's the desire is, and I don't want to strip them of the ability to try to keep our kids safe.
One thing that's not been mentioned here is the timing of this, too. You know, I went down to see my grandkids in Nashville, dropped them off at Church Day School, was sitting and waiting for Lisa to come out of a grocery store, and people started dashing around all over the place, and I called my window and I said, "What's going on?" Well, they think there was a shooting up at the school, and that was two blocks from where I dropped my grandchildren off. So all this is not, this is all part of that, too. You know, the same people, those same parents are asking questions right now, like, "Why didn't we do more to uncover this situation and find these things out and save my little baby?" That's baked into this, that needs to be understood. We talked a lot about this in September, and there was not nearly as much passion about it, I don't think, and I don't, the thing I was most worried about was the part about the police coming in and using the school or something, but that's all part of this, is the safety. You know, the governor called for a special session of legislators because of this. We talked last week about how we all need to have Narcan everywhere because kids are walking around vaping, we're afraid, and they don't know what's in the vape. I mean, how can we not ask kids about that? We're trying to, this is all about safety and love of the children. I know it doesn't kind of feel like it when you read it in cold, hard, black, and white, but that's what's supposed to be baked into these things.
In September meeting, we had, was that, was that a work session or was that a September meeting where we discussed all this?
September work session and then first reading at the October meeting.
Okay, so at the October meeting, we discussed this again, right? I'm trying to remember, because here's, so the cameras that we have here, I've been pushing for this for years so that everyone, I mean, these guys are sick of me talking about it. For 10 years, I've been pushing to get these cameras in here so everyone can watch it, everyone, and I love the fact that people showed up. I really appreciate that. I genuinely do. I love when people are passionate about this. I think we're all on the same side. We want the best for our children. It's not an easy process to get there. There's times where you have to make, you're wringing your hands and you're going, "Man, you know, okay, so I got a little girl who's passed out because she ingested something, and here's a boy, and I'm asking him, 'What happened?' Oh, I can't talk to him until a parent gets here, and here's a little girl passed out, and I can't do anything with her?" And here's a little girl passed out, and I can't do anything with her? I can't do anything until I get that kid's parent down here to interrogate and make sure? That's not going to happen, because what if that's your daughter down there? If it's your daughter who's ingested something accidentally, didn't even know, and I can't ask anybody about it? I'd rather err on the side of caution and be able to ask the question. Plus, let's back up for a second. Any of us, we all grew up, did we ever get in trouble and get questioned by people at school? We did. I know, you never got in trouble, but I got in trouble and they pulled me in and just asked me what I did. And it was as simple as that. Nothing has changed since then. In fact, this is predicated upon the School Security Act of 1981, that's how old the bones of this structure are. It dates back to 81, which I think was just the other day, but clearly it was like 40 years ago.
Well, just to further support what Ms. Woods and Mr. Dean was saying, if you, I think it's important to understand the intent, like Tim was saying, was baked in, the intent and the spirit of the law. The third article, "It is the intent of this part to extend further rather than limit the authority of the principals and teachers to secure order and provide protection of students within each school." That's all we're trying to do.
Okay, so let's just play devil's advocate here for the people who are upset. What's the alternative?
Chaos.
I genuinely want to know, what's the alternative here? Let's poke as many holes as we can. What's the alternative?
I have a suggestion.
I don't have one.
Yeah, I sit down. Lack of order.
Yep. Having said all that, I will make the motion that we pass policy, oh, I'm sorry, unless we're done with...
Any other discussion?
I just still don't like about keeping quiet. I just think that sends the wrong signal. I know the fact that it's in there, the fact, no, thanks. You know, we can question because we've given enough examples, and especially, you know, we all heard a situation where your scenario was actually truthful, but we need, sometimes we need to ask without a parent being there. We're not, it's not a criminal investigation at that point, we don't care about that. What's being used there is not going to court, but sometimes we just need to know what's going on. But I do feel that having that, the fact that the kid is refusing to answer a question, I don't want anybody lying. That's, lying is, it's, I hate it. I mean, I hate, hate's a strong word, too, but this one thing I despise is people who lie. And, but that keeping quiet, sometimes it's just the best thing to do, and we shouldn't penalize and even even have that word in there for keeping quiet.
I don't think they're penalized, it says "may," it doesn't say "shall."
I know, but it's still...
So, Julie, what would the alternative be?
I just think refuse, take out the word refusing to answer, you know, because sometimes they're going to. So why, why are we putting that word "refuse" in there if it's a "may"? We're going to penalize them because they're quiet. If we think that they're withholding information, that could be a criminal thing, then we're into another step.
I think it depends on what the situation is, which is exactly, you know, which is what we talked about here, where the principals and the teachers have to use their judgment.
That's what I hate about policy. Policy takes away judgment, but this does, this keeps that judgment in as far as I'm concerned, Julie. I think it's still, I have 100% faith in our administrators, and I know everybody don't feel that way, but I trust, that's why it says "may" and not "shall." They, you know, that doesn't mean that if Timmy Dean doesn't answer the question, that he's definitely going to be penalized. The teacher and administrator at that school will know well enough whether or not Timmy Dean is a liar, or Timmy Dean is a truth-teller, or he's a really shy kid who just, he's going to freak out when a teacher or administrator asks him something. I just trust the judgment of the people that we hire for that.
I'm not saying, I'm not questioning that we trust the judgment or that our teachers and administrators don't love our children or the school board. So, give me a scenario where Julie Byers has refused to answer a question, and now I am subject to disciplinary action. I'm not answering the question. It's a "may," so I'm not going to answer your question.
So the little girl that got OD'd?
Yep.
And you don't answer the question, she dies.
But that's...
The kid, the kid did answer the question and they Narcan'd her and brought her back to life.
Mm-hmm.
Because the kid answered the question. Yeah, twice.
Right.
So, in that instance, Julie, I mean, you asked for, and I know it's extreme, and we hope it never happens again, but it did happen once, and the kid did tell the truth. And that was the good, that was the right thing to do.
Right, but whether he told the truth, whether he told us or if he kept his mouth shut, there was disciplinary action because of the circuit.
It becomes criminal at that point, because then the police come in. The police come in and say, "The kid didn't answer, didn't offer assistance, didn't," and in fact was, it was exigent circumstances, and the fact that here's a girl who's OD'd laying on the floor, and they need to know what's going on.
And she died, and she would have died.
She died if the kid didn't say anything. I completely disagree with that, and that kid needs to answer that question. Otherwise, that's criminal charges against him. And then the mayor shall, and here, gets trumped by the state charges, because the city comes in and uses its police policing, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the police would then be able to bring charges against the kid for not answering any questions and not providing any evidence. And also was the kid that OD'd the girl.
Well, but at that point, it's completely different, because had that child died, that's a whole nother, you know, he did the right thing by telling, I mean, he put himself in a disciplinary situation by answering the question.
Correct.
But that's a very extreme situation, because had he not, then he's going to be on charges for murder, second degree murder or something, maybe.
Manslaughter.
Manslaughter, okay. Something a lot worse.
That's all up to law enforcement and the DA, I'm not going to weigh in on that.
Right. A lot worse than us, you know, saying something. But it's a realistic situation, that there's, if somebody says, answers a question or does not answer, does not answer a question.
I just, I'm sorry, but the "may" is what gives me the ability to, because it's not a "shall."
Do you not think that the child or the student, knowing whether or not there are consequences, whether they answer a question or not, is going to influence them to answer the question? They know there's no consequences to refusing to answer a question.
Then they'll remain silent forever. They'll never get an answer out of any kid, because like, "I don't have to say anything."
And how does any of this dialogue and the bond between administrators and teachers and children, I mean, we want them to feel close to the teachers and administrators because it's safe, but if you're going to cut down communication, you lose all that.
I still think we're talking about a limited number, where most kids are going to have open dialogue, but some kids are going to speak whether they are comfortable or not because they are intimidated by an authority figure or by somebody else. And so they're feeling intimidated, so they're going to speak. Whether they should be, whether they shouldn't be, I don't know. I don't know these situations. I wasn't, you're right, I wasn't a kid that was in trouble all the time, so I don't know what it's like to go to the principal's office. But there are times, and I've seen kids who clam up and they can't talk because they're nervous, or they start spilling gibberish because they're nervous. And it has no relevance to what has happened over here, when they're talking, they're just nervous. I just don't like that refusing to answer a question is going to get somebody in trouble.
It's not.
It may, I just don't like that.
So, with your saying that, though, what you're saying is you don't have faith in administrators. You're saying you don't trust that they may use their judgment in a situation where it may or may not be warranted.
I'm not saying...
I trust their judgment, that they know when it's warranted.
I'm not saying I don't trust their judgment. I'm saying a child may refuse to answer a question just because they're nervous, or they don't know exactly, or they don't remember exactly, and so they decided, because parents have coached them, "If you don't know, keep your mouth shut." So yes, they may be in trouble, they may not be in trouble, but I just, I trust our administrators, but I also know kids get intimidated by certain presence. I mean, I get intimidated if I'm around a six-foot-four bodybuilder and he's starting to, you know, do stuff, I get nervous, too. So, and that's as an adult. But what about a child? And, you know, it depends on their circumstances and what their home life is like, and I don't know. That's just me. I trust our administrators, but I don't like the fact that we're forcing our children to answer a question, even with the word "may."
What's the alternative? What's, I hate to say, you can't have, eat your cake and have it too. I mean, it won't work both ways. There's, what's the alternative?
They're allowed to remain...
I see what you're saying, but what's the alternative?
They're allowed to remain quiet.
They are already allowed to remain quiet. That's what the policy says, they may remain quiet. They shall not remain quiet. They may remain.
They may get in trouble if they... They may get in trouble if they remain quiet.
And Julie, this is, this, so first of all, don't break the law, right? First of all, don't break policy. Don't break the rules, kid. That's the easiest thing in the world. Stop doing stuff, okay? Number two, if you didn't do anything wrong...
What if it's you and Bart that broke the law, not me?
This is my kid.
And I saw it, and I was starting to be interrogated by it, and I don't know, I just don't want to say anything.
So I don't understand how you being quiet there gets you in trouble.
Because I'm not saying anything.
Good, then be quiet. It's "may," it's not "shall," it's "may." This is the conditional statement.
Well, we're just going to agree to disagree, because I don't like that word, and apparently you do and Mr. Dean does, so we're just going to agree to disagree.
I think, I think we've kind of discussed this, and I'm going to go ahead and call the question. I think that is what we do, or at least I'm going to ask for a motion for, is there a motion for approval of policy 6.303?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Altizer.
Mrs. Byers?
May.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Dr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Aye.
Mrs. Woods?
Aye.
So the motion passes four to one. Okay, and so, that completes the business portion of our meeting. Just as a reminder, some upcoming dates and events, next, next week, no, this week. This week is the TSBA Leadership Conference and Annual Convention. We will have our next work session on November 28th at 6:00 PM, and then our next business meeting will be at, on December 12th at 6:00 PM as well. If there are no further discussions, this meeting's adjourned. Roll tribe.